All right. Is there anything special I need to read?
Not tonight.
The stuff in green? Nope. Okay. Let's get this up just a little bit closer to you. Everybody ready? Okay. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you all to the already July meeting of the zoning, Laconia Zoning Board of Adjustments. And with that, can we do roll call?
Sorry.
Uh, Michael Allof.
Here.
Gail Ober.
Here.
Will Almeida.
Yep.
Mike Book.
Here.
And Steve Booker.
Here. Okay. With that, Mike, if you don't mind, you'll be voting on all issues before the board tonight, please. Okay? Next is the minutes from the previous meeting. Everybody get a chance to, well, that seemed to have done something. Everybody get a chance to review the minutes from the last meeting? If so, are there any changes, additions, subtractions? If none, I'd like to entertain a motion. We have a motion, second?
I'll second that.
We have a second. All those in favor of the motion?
Right.
Okay, that passes as we move on. Okay, we have no extensions tonight. We have no hearings to continue tonight, so we're going to move right into the public hearings. Uh, the public hearings, possible consideration and vote. Purpose of this agenda section is for the board to have a presentation from the applicant and offer a public hearing for the public to provide input. The board may also deliberate the application, decide, and conduct a final vote at this So, with that, application, uh, Z-02020-0037SE for Duffers Drive, Unit B, special exception for short-term lodging. Would the applicant please come forward, introduce yourself for the record? Is the applicant here tonight? Since the applicant is not here, I therefore will request from the board a motion to move this to the next meeting. No one wants to move it to the next meeting, therefore, since they're not here?
Oh, we can hear a motion. Chance, I'll make a motion. We extend the application to Duffers Drive. Until next month.
We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor? Gail, how do you vote?
I'm in favor.
Okay. All those against is one. All right. So it's moved to the next meeting. Uh, next application is, uh, 0047, variance, 85 Zion Hill Road, variance for minimum lot frontage. Applicant is requesting a variance from Article 6, Section 235-34 to reduce minimum lot frontage to allow for the subdivision of the property with church and two existing homes into three separate lots. Would the applicant please come forward, introduce yourself for the record, and tell us how we can help?
My name is James Rhodes, and I'm recording secretary for the church. I have with me two of our leadership, Joe Allard, who's treasurer, and also Stephen Barrett, who is trustee. And, uh, just like to, if I may, give just a very brief background of our church and where we are and what we hope to be able to do. Uh, our church was incorporated in 1980, and I've been there since the beginning of that. Uh, so, this I've seen firsthand. Uh, gee, it just felt kind of old right there. Just to mention that we previously, when, after we were incorporated, we were able to lease Tardif Park House from the city of Laconia for a time, which, of course, no longer exists now, but also Memorial Park House, and we did that for around 20 years. Uh, we always had a great relationship with the city of Laconia and treated those buildings as if they were our own. In the year 2000, we were able to purchase 25 acres of land in Lakeport. We bought that from Armin Baldick's family farm, which abuts our property right behind it. Uh, Armin was very helpful to the church in those years, and we certainly remember him fondly, as we know the city of Laconia does also. 2001, 2002, we cleared a section of our land, built a road, which we put in Zion Hill Road that we had to put in through a right-of-way that we had on Union Avenue. 2002, we built our maintenance building, and also in the same year, we granted the city of Laconia an easement to be able to continue using the turnaround, which is on our property on the top of Clark Avenue, as they had done previously, uh, to allow the trucks to be able to turn around there. It's a dead-end street, and also to be able to use it as a, a snow dump in the winter. 2003, we built the first log home, which is on the right-hand side as you look at Clark Avenue, and we've used that home as a parsonage, which we continue to do. 2004, we built the church building. 2005, we built the second log home, which we've used as a staff house. Last year, we sold a half acre of land to an abutter on St. Catherine Street, and this year, we sold an acre to an abutter, HK Powersport. Their business is going well. They wanted to expand, and we were more than happy to work with them on that. And, uh, good potential, we may sell them another acre of land because, you know, things are just going well for them. It's good to hear that during this time period. Well, in 2019, we applied to the planning board to subdivide those three, or the one piece of property into three, um, with the hopes of having the potential of selling the two log homes separately, uh, one with a little over six acres of land, as the map indicates, and the other one that's closest to the church with a little over a half an acre of land. As we met with the planning board, they indicated that, you know, according to the regulations, we would need to, uh, put in a hammerhead in order to be able to get sufficient road frontage for each of those pieces of property. As it is right now, I believe in measuring it, uh, I believe we have 203 feet, uh, that's on our property with the current turnaround that's there. Earlier this year, uh, well, let me just say, I'll back up a little bit. Uh, we did go through and have all the survey work done in anticipation of putting that hammerhead in. That was an expensive process in itself, cost about 20,000. Uh, and then we put the, uh, the, uh, project out to bid, and we received estimates between 100 to 200,000 dollars to do that. Really made it so that it was economically not possible for us to do that, so we put the project on hold. And, uh, this spring, actually, the first week coronavirus hit, I met with Dean and, and Rob, and just discussed if there might be any other alternative that we could do. And after, you know, several conversations and a lot of thought, suggestion was made that it may be possible to, uh, approach it in a different manner, uh, that could be good for all concerned, and that was, uh, applying for a variance, uh, with you folks here this evening, and that's, that's the reason we're here for that. Like to give reasons that we feel variance application, uh, would, I would say, go along with the spirit of the regulations, even if not exactly the law of it, and could be a, a good solution for all involved. Uh, the current turnaround was built by the city and is still in very good shape. Uh, the city has continued to use it even to this time period. Uh, they're able to turn around and, uh, plows go up and down, and, uh, as I say, we, we did give them an easement to, to be able to use that as a snow dump. So it's been beneficial, certainly for us, but also for the neighborhood of Clark Avenue, and, uh, and has worked very well. We wouldn't want to change anything. Uh, we certainly want to work with the city. One thing, if you're familiar with Clark Avenue, particularly that top section or the whole hill, uh, it's very steep and hilly, uh, and at the top where that turnaround is, to the right-hand side of it, as you're going up the hill, uh, it's bordered by a wetland area, and all of those things contribute to the reason for a high cost in, in putting in a hammerhead. We would have to put in additional, uh, drainage and things to not disrupt the neighborhood, uh, but as it is right now, everything's working fine. I don't think any of the abutters would have any problem with continuing as it's, as it's going, and I think it would be best for all. It would certainly work well for us as a church, too. As I say, that subdivision would allow us the possibility of selling the two homes, which currently, because they're part of, uh, church property, are tax-exempt, but if we were able to sell them, which I think in this current market, they would go very quickly, uh, it would place them on the tax roll, uh, with a value of combined about 500,000 dollars. Uh, so, you know, I think it's a situation where it's good for the city, and it certainly would be good for us, too. Uh, would definitely help us with the current mortgage that we have, uh, but I believe it would be helpful for the city and wouldn't be any hindrance whatsoever to the, uh, the neighborhood either. I believe that's all I have. Really appreciate your consideration of this variance and appreciate your time very much. If you have any questions, be more than happy to answer as best I can, or these gentlemen could also. Yes.
What, what's a hammerhead?
If you look at that map that we gave a copy of, I don't know if yours is colored, uh, mine is, but the, the red indicates, uh, the current turnaround that's there, and the hammerhead would, that would have to be, my understanding, ripped up and rebuilt with additional drainage, uh, and then enlarged, which that yellow section shows, and that's what they're referring to as a hammerhead. I don't know if I explained that well enough, Dean, but it's my understanding.
Thank you.
Okay?
What actual lots are we looking at subdividing? I mean, we'll...
So as you look at the map, uh, if you go up
Aye.
Towards the Guilford line, from where that turnaround is currently, there's a house right up there, there's a shared driveway. So there's one house on the right, one on the left. The one on the right includes, uh, a little over six acres of land, which you can see there in that section. And then the home on the left is about a half acre lot. That's the one that's closest to the church. And then the third piece of land would be the church and the remaining acreage.
So, would that be, uh, 488-10.1? If I look at the MLS number going across the house?
10.1 would be the smaller house with a half acre. 10.2 would be the land that would go with the house on the right-hand side as you go up the hill.
Okay. Um, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Do I, I, is that, do you have any follow-up? I have, I have a question.
Well, I was just trying to figure out what is what. So, uh, 10.2 goes to that little house, uh, to me, it's facing towards the bottom of the page.
Yep.
There, that goes there.
Mm-hmm.
And all of that land there goes with it.
Yes.
And then it's going to be subdivided to 10 would be the rest of, stays with the church. It's 488-10.
Yes, that's right.
Okay.
Up at the top of the page, yes, correct.
Okay.
And that's, and that border between 10.1 and 10?
Mm-hmm.
I noticed there's a, a line that goes, uh, there is disseminating some footage. Is that where the dividing line would be?
Yes.
It's like 195.18?
Correct.
Feet?
Yes.
Okay, I see that.
And that's actually, uh, kind of a steep little slope right there in between that piece of land and the church.
Yes, Gail.
Oh, okay. Um, the, what are the two houses being used for now?
They're being used for the same intent that they were originally. Uh, the one is for the parsonage, and the other one is for a staff house.
Okay. Um, I guess then maybe I don't understand where the two businesses that you mentioned in your opening statement came in.
Oh, I was just referring to, they have nothing to do with this whatsoever.
Oh, all right, okay, then, I, okay.
Just, just saying what we've done since we've been there, that's all.
Okay, so that's what the houses, and you no longer need those houses for that purpose, I guess I'm understanding.
Well, I mean, they're nice to have for that, but I think we more really at this point in our church history would, uh, very much need to reduce our indebtedness.
So, so this is a financial decision?
Exactly.
On the part of the church?
Exactly.
It's not, okay, I understand that.
Yep. And nothing changes. Everything is existing right now.
Um, so, and the red highlighted area, in, in my, my map, it's got like a yellow border around it?
Right.
Okay. Where does this, is this what the city uses?
It's, that's actually all on our property, but the city uses the red, which is currently the turnaround that's there right now.
Yep.
And they push the snow, uh, to that right-hand side as you're going up the hill.
Okay.
Okay, 'cause the other side, you know, connects into our church.
Okay, and then who does the maintenance from beyond that area to the two houses? You?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that's our, we put that driveway in.
All right, so it would be two, it may be Dean, so this would make two, a prop, two properties abutting, I guess, across the street?
Yes.
From each other?
Across the driveway.
With a private, single private driveway?
Right, that's correct, the shared driveway.
And is that going to be deeded access to both of the new properties? And is there any kind of confirmation that maybe we could get in terms of the whole city as to the fact that, that the city isn't looking to put in another road there? These things have a way five years, 10 years down the road of all of a sudden the two property owners saying, oh, wait.
Yeah.
You know, we need this plowed for whatever reason.
I'm sure we could have that written up that way.
Uh, yeah, I'm just looking out for the city in this case, which is kind of
Yeah.
Part of what I have to do.
Yes.
And I, I do want to make sure that we're not, this isn't coming back to bite us down the road when these two property owners or the next property owners, or the next property owners come to the city and say?
We understand.
We don't have access, the fire department can't get here, blah, 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 blah. And, well, that's a concern
Yep.
Going forward in a subdivision. Okay?
So currently, the city has an easement.
An easement, right.
Go onto the property to dump snow, turn around, and then go back down Clark Avenue.
Okay, and it's...
From the city's standpoint, and I've talked with, uh, Wes Anderson, the DPW director, as long as we maintain that ability to do that, DPW is, is happy.
Okay, so, they're not going to, you know, we can't, you, you understand what I'm concerned about.
And then as part, and then, I mean, i-if you, if you grant the variance, they still need to go to planning board for subdivision.
Oh, okay.
And at that point, we will formalize the easements and the cross-easement that they'll need for their shared driveway, uh, shared driveways, actually, 'cause as you come off Clark Avenue, the, the driveway, uh, basically splits in two directions. One goes straight up the hills with the two houses as a shared, one shared drive, and then off to the left, they have a, an access to the church. And all of that will remain, and, and none of that changes under this proposal.
Okay, and are we creating, and maybe this you can't answer, so if there's a time to, it, Mr. Chair, should, if there are any more questions of the applicant, I have questions for the, for Dean, but I don't think I have any more for, for you right now. Thank you.
So Zion Hill Road, is that a public road?
No.
So that's a, a driveway?
Correct.
Yep.
And Clark Ave is a public road?
Clark Ave is a public road to the point on the map where you see
Where the red?
Starts.
Okay.
And then from that point into about 50 or 60 feet, the city has the easement to go onto the property, dump snow, and turn around. We don't do maintenance, other than a little bit of plowing we do there, only at our convenience so that we have a place to dump the snow that's accumulated on the plow from Clark Avenue.
So currently, it's asking for, if I'm reading this correctly, to reduce the road frontage?
Correct.
Well, the road frontage is Zion Hill Road, right?
Hmm, no.
No.
What's the road frontage?
Uh, that's the tricky part on this. They have, they have a little bit of road frontage at the end of Clark Avenue, basically 50 feet, the, the width of, of the right-of-way for Clark Avenue. They have a small section way over on Union Avenue that's about 30 feet wide. They have a little dog leg. It's their property. And, that's it. So when this property was developed, I'm not sure what happened at that time, 'cause that was many moons ago, but, um, it's, it certainly did not have the required frontage at that time, and so I'm, I'm guessing that there was a variance or some kind at that point in time to create the complex for the church as a whole.
Okay, um, Ms...
Please.
Again, my questions are more for Dean. I don't, I, I'm going to ask him questions that I don't think...
Do it, if it helps you clarify, do it.
Okay, all right. So are we creating two lots without, what's, what would be the, I know this is a planning board purview, but what would be the addresses of these two lots?
The...
Would they be Clark Street or Zion Hill Road?
They, they would be Clark Avenue, and the church would be Zion Hill Road.
Okay, so the church, the address stays the same?
Correct.
These two houses will be separate and distinct from Zion Hill Road?
Yes.
Which they currently are.
So they will need to be assigned new addresses by either the E-911 system Yep. Plus public service plus, and that's a planning process?
Correct, yes.
That's not for our consideration today?
Yes.
Okay. Unfortunately, I went up Zion Hill Road, and I never thought to go up Clark Avenue, so I really, I, I'm not seeing it the way I should be, but I think you've done a good job of explaining what it is that I need to see.
If I could just mention, both of those homes now do have an address for Clark Avenue.
Oh, okay, all right, that helps.
One's 88, the other one's 87.
Okay, and, and Mr. Chair, or actually to, to Dean, are, are we creating irregular lots or non-conforming lots by doing this?
You are creating, uh, three non-conforming lots. That's essentially...
You are creating because of the frontage.
Yeah, that's essentially what the variance is, is asking for. Now, you got, I think you have to look at, what's the purpose of having the road frontage in?
Well, no, I understand.
One of the purposes of road frontage is to control density.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, you've got a 17, if you, if you were to approve this, you'll have a 17-acre parcel with the church on it, you'll have a six-acre parcel with one of the houses and a half-acre parcel for the third house, for the third property, in an area that's owned quarter-acre lots, so, you know, you're by no means, you know, overwhelming on density.
And on what would be lot 10.2?
Six acres.
I'm less concerned with 10 point, with the one below, the one to the...
The 10.2?
Yeah, it doesn't say 10.2 here, but I think that's what...
Well, it's down, down...
The down lot.
Yeah.
So that's all right there on the front, right over the, uh...
Oh, it does. Oh, okay. I must have missed that, I apologize. Um, so, that particular lot is, you've got log cabins on there, and I'm presuming that they're not of a really big size?
Not huge.
Okay, so somebody presumably would buy the, buy them to expand them, and I'm just trying to make sure that down the road, or find out just to know down the road, that one looks like it's got some steep slopes on it, much steeper than the other lot.
Really, I would say I, I don't...
Graphic, you know, just the closeness of the contours, it tells you that, and I guess my question is, are we creating a lot that's unexpandable to the new owner?
I, I would say no. I think there's enough, enough area immediately adjacent to both houses to be able to add a garage, a porch, or even an addition...
These are the kind of things, because that's going to be a big box lot. It's got a view, it's got everything.
Without having to come back to this board for a variance. The large lot at the bottom is, it's large, but it's very hilly, it has a significant wetland on it.
That's the one I'm concerned about, is the one at the bottom.
It would be very, very difficult to subdivide that further, to try to get houses in there because of the topology and the wetlands. It would be, you know, you know, never say never, but it would be very impractical.
And, well, and I guess my question is, is by creating these two lots, and I'm not concerned with the upper lot, unless there's a wetlands problem that I can't see on this two-dimensional map. I'm, I'm, I'm trying to get a handle in my head around what could possibly happen, and maybe that's not a topic for tonight, on that lower lot, if somebody buys it and doesn't want to live in a small cabin, and they come to us next week, next year, in two years, and they need all sorts of variances to develop this lot to put a, what they may consider to be a proper home.
Or a condominium.
Or, well, and that, we can, we can, you, the planning board can handle that, but I, I guess my question is, is it undevelopable beyond where those little houses are?
Well, if I might just
Or the bottom little house?
Say something there? If I could.
Please.
Neither house is really very small.
Okay.
The one on the lower lot, 10.2, that has four bedrooms and
Okay, so they're good-sized, brought these...
You know, three bathrooms. I mean, it's a nice home. Uh, the other one is a little bit smaller, potentially three bedrooms and two baths. So, you know, they're decent size, and I think they would be fine for a normal family. And, uh, there is some room... And there is some room, certainly, the house on the right, 10.2, to put in a garage or something of that sort, right there, without being a hindrance, I, I believe, anyway. But the majority of that lot is wooded, it's very pretty, it is hilly, but it gives the owner a buffer, and as was said, there's a significant amount of wetlands in there, which, and there is really no access into that property at all, so there wouldn't be any way in on the other side, like St. Catharines or
I see what you, no, I
Hillsdale, so it's just a very nice piece of land, but it couldn't really be developed for, I don't believe, for subdivision further. Yes.
Is there any water and sewage up there?
There is, it's town water and sewage, yeah, for all
These are really nice lots, it sounds like.
They are, it's very pretty. I mean, the top of Clark Ave, you get a view of
You get a view, yeah, I mean, these are better than
Sunsets are gorgeous.
$250,000 lots.
They're very nice.
In this market, these are, but that's not a concern for us. I just want to know, it's less about what you're asking us to do, it's the fallout
I understand.
from what you're asking us to do, and how we approach that, and maybe we just leave that for another day. That would be Dean's, that's more of an administrative call and a planning board call than it really is
We do realize we will have to go before the planning board, too, if this is approved.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, uh?
Yes.
So on this here, what you have for frontage is basically the 50-foot right-of-way? That is at the end of Clark Way, or Clark Ave?
For, the end result will be, if you were to approve, that the two houses would, would be sharing that 50 foot, so they'd basically get 25 feet each.
Ah, I see.
And then, and then the, the, the church would get that little 30 feet that they actually have way over here.
Wow.
Off of Union.
And how much do they really need?
Um, I think it's 80 for each lot.
I believe that's what you said before.
But in effect, if the, if this driveway bolstered and designed with the fleshing out of the right-of-way to share between these two houses, gives the type of frontage that you're looking for going back into
That was, that was the plan a year or so ago, was to kind of expand that hammerhead and create property lines long enough so that each lot would end up with the prerequisite frontage.
Aye.
But that turned out to be a very expensive proposition for the church.
Okay.
And, and it really doesn't, it really doesn't gain anything for the city, other than conforming, you know, to the letter of the, of the, of the rules and regulations. I mean, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna maintain the easement, we're still gonna be able to do what we're doing now, and that's all we have an interest in doing.
Are they wide enough by city standards, Dean, to create two parallel driveways? It's 25 feet, you, enough to, you know what I'm saying, is to create
You, you could, but I, I think at the planning board process, I think
It may not be advisable, but I'm saying
We would probably encourage a shared driveway.
Encourage a shared driveway?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions at the moment?
No, sir.
With that, you may sit for a second.
Thank you.
I'd like to open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public wishes to speak for or against this application, please come forward and introduce yourself for the As the record indicate, no one from the public wishes to speak for or against this application, therefore, I bring it back to the board for, for the questions of the applicant. So Dean, you got more of the questions tonight than the applicant, but that's okay.
It's okay.
All right, so Zion Hill gives them how many for their frontage?
I'm not sure the exact dimension, but I just
Approximate
I would say it's 25 to 30 feet of frontage that they have on Union Avenue.
Five to 30.
Because Zion Hill is a private road.
That is a, that's a private road, and it's actually on a, an easement right-of-way over someone else's land, but they do own that little dog leg that goes out.
Okay, and that's gonna probably, in all likelihood, at least for the foreseeable future, stay a private road?
Absolutely will be a private road, is, yes.
So our concern is with Clark Avenue?
So Clark Avenue is gonna provide them with the rest of the minimal frontage?
Correct. The church property would have the 25 to 30 feet on Union Ave, and then the two house properties would, would split the 50 feet that constitutes the end of, of Clark
The Clark Avenue, so they will not get no frontage on Clark Avenue, the church?
The church, correct.
Okay, that's what I was trying to get at.
Yep.
Is, how does that be up? So Zion Hill is gonna be their road frontage for the church.
Yep.
And then Clark Avenue is gonna be the road frontage for the other two lots?
Right.
Mm-hmm.
And all three would be non-conforming.
Okay.
But they're non-conforming at the moment.
Right.
All right, I got one more question.
Yes, sir.
What is Perkins Road? Is that something that's not there anymore?
Oh, that's a little private right-of-way that goes into Guilford. That's off of Zion Hill, which is also a private right-of-way.
Oh, and it comes right out of that other right-of-way?
Yes.
All right.
Does that eventually go to the Perkins off of Country Club, where it's in Laconia and that development back in there?
I don't know. Goes into Guilford, that's the, the end of my purview.
That stone wall's there.
Okay.
And what is the benefit to the city, Dean? Excluding tax revenues, which is really not a concern of this board?
The, the, I don't know that there's any, other than the tax, potential tax revenue, I, I wouldn't characterize it as, as any additional benefit to the city, but we are maintaining the benefit that we have now.
Okay.
And do we feel this is the highest, best use for something like this?
You know, given the overall circumstances, I, I think you're
Limited
This is about, yeah, this is about the best that anybody can expect to do, to get these houses on individual properties.
Which in itself would be more conforming? All right.
Neutral, yeah. All right, any other questions of the applicant?
No, the only concern I have is I wouldn't even know how to begin to draft the variance and to meet the conditions of it. But I'll leave that in better hands.
Any closing comments, sir?
I just would just like to thank you for your time and consideration of this.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, I'm gonna close it to the public and bring it to the board for discussion.
I, I guess, Mr. Chair, the only downside I see to this is in the future, and I don't know if we really need to concern ourselves with that now. I mean, I think the planning board, you know, site plan review is probably gonna answer a lot of those questions, but it can't get there until it gets to us, correct?
Correct. I mean, you could put a condition on 10 dot 2, if you so desired, to, of no further subdivision.
Is that really what we want to do, though? I think that's our question.
Well, that, that's up to you. I, I don't think it's necessary, but if it makes you more comfortable, then
My concern is, is if they, with the land being zoned quarter acres, and, and my past history is that they come in and go, well, I'd like to build 49 condos, is an example, because I have the ability to build 49 if I could spread it across the property, but I can't, so I can squeeze that into three buildings and, so that's my concern, is I've seen stuff like this happen. So now, to help to understand this, all these little patches of grass that I see on this document, is that what they, I'm trying to find it on the thing, but I can't see it. Is that wetlands?
It is, it is delineated by the dotted line there and the points.
Yeah.
You know, eight, 27, 26, 25, 24.
Because everything else is pretty steep and stuff, and so you would be condensed into pudding, if that was, and then on top of it, you're taking road frontage and subdividing the road frontage once again to, and that's my concern, is your
You could certainly see extending the hammerhead to come out to get onto the wall, which is steep slopes.
Which gets out on that area where all that, that area there, I don't know how to call it, that area there is where I'm
That's all wetland.
So there's nothing they can buy to make it developable, or nothing, not these folks, I'm not, so tomorrow
In, in the current regulatory environment, I don't think so, no.
Okay.
The point about extending the hammerhead, possibly, but it's, there's, there's, there's steep slopes in there earlier, and we, we do have a steep slope ordinance, anything
Well, yeah.
above 25 percent, you cannot develop on period, 15 to 25 percent requires conditional use permits, et cetera, so it's, like I said, never say never, but, yeah.
So if you're comfortable that with, with the, with the restrictions in place now, that, you know, we'll, we'll all be pushing up daisies, with the exception of Kalina and Mike, that, you know, that before the condo people come in and decide, oh, these are great lots, you know?
Well, it's, if the view is, then, you know
Yeah.
Where there's a view, there comes
Where there's a view, there's a way.
There comes money.
And, and right, and, and I, just my question is, is more of a technical one or a legal one, is, is that within the purview of this board?
I think if you're concerned about future uses on that larger piece of land, that if you put the condition of no further subdivision or additional units of housing, that's a very legitimate condition to put on the, on the approval.
Yes.
On, back to this shared driveway, and I've personally had experience with some of these things, so in the construct of these people having access to their house, is it become a right-of-way, and do they cede their interest of it to the center line of the right-of-way? Now, I've seen stuff constructed like that, so it acknowledges that the road isn't owned by either house, but certainly they have the access to it.
I think that's something legalese have to
And maybe the, the planning board can look into that with our, our attorneys or something like that. I, I, again, I, that's, these are the questions I have going forward, but I'm just trying to determine whether it's for this board, or the planning board to, to really sort all that out. Dean, what recommend, what restrictions would you recommend with the, with the zoning in place that we already have now? I mean, I hate to put you on the spot, but I am gonna
For, for the 10 dot 2 lot?
The 10 dot 2 lot is actually the one, because it appears to be steeper
I think if you just simply state, no further subdivision or additional units of housing, that that covers it.
Okay.
All right, any other discussion? I'd like to entertain a motion, brave people out there.
That's a tough one.
All right. I'll, I'll take this one. I make a motion to approve the subdivision of the lots for application, zero, you can put the 2020 blah, blah, blahs, 0047 variance for 85 Zion Hill Road, which will subdivide the property, and the MLS numbers will be, MLS 326488-10 will remain with the church. MLS 326-488-10-1 would remain with the upper house with an approximate one-half acre, and then MLS 326-488-10.2 would belong to the lower house with approximately whatever acreage it is, seven
6.19.
6.19 acres, okay? They will, within this, they will see a reduced road frontage. The Zion Hill Road will be the road frontage for the church, and then the end of Clark Avenue into a shared driveway would be for the 10 dot 1 and 10 dot 2, and their road frontage would be divided up equally between the two. Fair enough to say?
Okay.
Okay. The variance is not contrary to the public interest, the purpose is not in conflict or explicit or implicit purpose of the ordinance and must not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. In this case, it's not gonna alter anything as far as the overall look of it, the housing on it has already been built, and the properties are set forth. The character of the neighborhood, the public health or safety or welfare or otherwise injured the public rights, in this case, the public rights would not be injured, the city would remain with its proper easement, so they can disperse the snow from Clark Avenue and stuff and be able to take care of that. The spirit of the ordinance is observed in the fact that we are removing land from the non-taxable side and put it into productive use. The value of the sounding properties are not diminished, this should not have any effect whatsoever as far as the values of the homes along Clark Avenue are, with the value of the church are, the two properties, actually, the one property is probably gonna gain in value and stuff due to the fact it's gonna have
Not a doubt.
six-plus acres associated with it. The literal enforcement of the ordinance result on that unnecessary hardship. The hardship here is in the, the fact of how this property is laid out, it's, it's up in the back country where limited frontage onto the roads were not available at the time of these developments, and as they move forward, as previously stated, the Zion Hill Road would provide the, less than code, but appropriate, road frontage for the church property, and then with the other two properties, 10 point 1, 10 point 2, dividing the remaining road frontage for their properties. And based on that, the way that has been laid out and stuff is the reason for the hardship itself. And based on that, the way that has been laid out and stuff is the reason for the hardship itself. The conditions set forth on this would, four-eight-eight, dash, ten would not have any additional conditions on it as long as the Zion Hill Road and stuff remains their private road along with their road frontage. And ten point one would remain as is with its road frontage. And ten point two would not, the condition for that property would be there would be no further development, addition of houses for separate families or anything along that line. They should be set forth so that any future buyer would be aware of that condition set forth in their deed so that there's no misinterpretation.
You're going for deed restricted.
Why not? That way I know it's not gonna...
No, I, I, I'm just asking you to clarify, okay?
Yeah.
All right.
Might as well.
Nice park, you know that, though, too. Have ten point two? Nice little wetlands park.
Are you buying it?
Huh?
Are you buying it?
No, but I'm just making a statement.
My pinky's big enough.
Crazy conservation plan.
Is there any other condition necessary to be set forth? With that being said, that's a motion?
I'll second that mo, that motion.
Okay, we have a second discussion of the motion. There being none, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Motion passes five, one. Thank you and have a good day, sir. Okay. Application zero, zero, four, eight, S.E., eleven A Golf View, special exception for short-term lodging. Applicant requests a special exception for Article seven, Section two thirty-five, dash, seventy, number two, allow short-term lodging. Is the applicant here tonight? Please come forward, introduce yourself for the record.
Good evening. Susan Lapierre and my husband, Richard Lapierre. We're requesting a special exception for the short-term leasing. We purchased our home in February of two thousand and twelve. We've been renting it since May of that year, and we've had no issues or complaints. The square footage is slightly above the fourteen-hundred that is in the regulations. And we do not see that it will create, create any additional hazards or to the, to the town. We'll be renting it to similar families of our size, parents, children, and grandparents. We've been renting it as seven-night minimum, and several of our families have returned every year. We have a leasing agent, Roach Realty is our leasing agent, and they are on-site. And they have been our agent since the beginning. With that, we appreciate your consideration of this and happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Do you actually have contracts that go with them representing you?
Our contract with Roach?
Yes.
We did in the beginning, yes. We signed an agreement with them, and they've been leasing it ever since, and then...
Can you provide us with a copy of that?
I believe we can, yes.
Okay.
And, and then they have all the contracts with the renters.
Okay, not so much at the moment. But I need substantial proof of that, other than the...
Other than the letter that they...
Other than the letter, yeah.
That they provided, okay, sure.
Some meat to add to it, and the contract you had signed with them that was dated back in two thousand and twelve
Okay.
would be a great way of, of showing that it actually...
Fill in the history with that.
Right, right. Okay, and... Anybody else have any questions?
My question.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes.
I, I certainly understand your point, and we, if you want to make it a condition of approval, if that's what you want to do, we could certainly get them. I, I know that on this particular case, and perhaps one other this evening, I have been speaking with Mr. Shaw regularly over the course of the past year and a half that we have been considering short-term rental regulation and everything else. And he has actually been very much part of the decision-making process. He has given the city a lot of input, both to staff and city council when it was appropriate. And I, I know that over the course of our various discussions, that this was one of the properties that he had mentioned that he gave me as an example that he had been representing for a, a number of years. So, while I don't have the exact documentation, I, I am familiar with this property being, meeting the requirements.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Well, we've got to open it up to the public.
Oh, okay, oh, I'm sorry.
You may have a seat for a minute, please.
Thank you.
I'd like to open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public was to speak for or against this application. Please come forward at this time and introduce yourself for the record. Let the record indicate no one from the public was to speak for or against this application. Therefore, I bring it back to the board for any further questions.
I have none, Mr. Chair.
There being none, I'd like to... Any closing comments from the applicant? Okay, thank you. With that, I'll close it to the public and, and bring it to the board for discussion. My only discussion is, I do, would really would like to see the backup to the, to a one-line statement. You know, to show that the proof's in the pudding. Not that I'm doubting his word, but...
But it could come up again?
Well, yeah, it, everything does.
It will come up again, and we, and we will fill in the blanks for you.
Okay. So, that's the only thing I have for it.
I can't think of anything else. I mean, they made the satisfactions of the ordinance, so...
If they have the document, it meets the...
If they have the doc, and I would condition, just, okay, I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve. Application Z zero-two, zero-two, zero, dash, zero, zero, four, eight. Special exception for Susan and Richard Lapierre at eleven A Golf View, Laconia. The requested use is specifically authorized in this chapter. The requested use will not increase demand for municipal services. The, the provisions of the chapters are, is met. It, it has the square footage, it has the necessary prerequisites that are iterated in our ordinance. It will not create any hazards to the health, safety, or general welfare of the public. And that it, and that if, and I, this is a condition of final approval, is that the contract or some evidence of a written contract with Roach Realty is provided and stored in the file by the city. Yeah, well, I meant for the five years. She said two thousand and twelve, I have no reason to doubt it, you know, so...
So, at least exhibiting five years.
Yeah, showing at least a five-year contract with Roach Realty. And it does meet that criteria with that particular document.
Okay, so we have a motion with a condition. Do we have a second of the motion?
Second.
We have a second, discussion of the motion. There being none, all those in favor? Okay. Passes with that condition, so you need to make sure he gets the documents that show that, because if not, then that becomes null and void, okay?
Sure. Thank you.
Have a good night. As we move right along, man, this is great. Okay. The next one is zero, zero, fifty, S.E., one, seven, six, Pleasant Street for a multifamily development. I got a letter here asking to move that.
I, I move we continue that. We've had notification of the property owner to the planning department, so I move we continue that application.
Okay. All those in...
Well, we need a second.
We have a second?
Second.
We got a second? All those in favor of moving it to the next meeting? Okay, move it to the next meeting. That's going to be application fifty, fifty-one. Right to? Right to. Next on the agenda is zero, zero, fifty-three, thirty-two Carver Street. Setback variance. Applicant requests a variance from Article six, Section two thirty-five, thirty-five B, side setback to allow for the installation of a covered chimney. Is the applicant here tonight? Please come forward, introduce yourself for the record, and tell us how we may help, please.
My name is Claudia Marciafe, live on thirty-two Carver. This is Chris Roy, who lives in...
Good evening.
Good evening. So, we found out there are lot sizes were actually undersized when the zoning rules took place in Laconia. So, pretty much anything we want to do, we gotta get a variance for. We're looking to get a wood furnace or a...
Wood burning fireplace?
Wood burning fireplace with a chase added on, so we don't lose the inside square footage of our home. It's going to be nicely sided. We have a great, great relationship with all of our neighbors on Carver Street, so... Yeah, I think that's all we got. Any questions? I've never actually done this before, like actually presented something, thank you.
You're doing fine.
I've been on your side, though.
I think the only question I have is, you got a contractor building a chimney, so it's going to be melt to our fire specs, and it's going to be tall enough that the smoke isn't blowing into the neighbor's house and all that other stuff.
Yes, absolutely.
If I'm not mistaken, that's a permitted item, a, a per, an item for a permit, because it's got to have a fire inspection.
Yeah, I think it does. And the house can be a certain height and, you know, and all that other stuff depending on the topography.
I think we went through this once before, years ago, on another house.
If we did, I don't remember it, but there's certain standards you want to build chimney to.
We're, all contractors are licensed, of course, that we are hiring. The folks we're buying the fireplace from is through Meredith Energy Savers, so...
Oh, okay, great.
Nothing's homemade, not when it comes to fire.
I agree. Especially when it comes to your insurance company.
Yeah, that too.
So, how close to the setback is that, to the side setback, or is it...
I believe we are actually exactly ten feet from our neighbor's property, and that's what, like, that's why we're encroaching it.
Ten foot is your setback, and the house is sitting at ten feet.
Right.
Okay, okay.
And you need to go two feet into that setback?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, the old setback rule was ten feet, so, you know, we've updated that since this house was built, clearly.
Oh, yes.
It's not your fault.
Any other questions of the applicant at this time? There being none, you may have a seat for a second. But don't get too comfortable, because that's something to be quick. With that, I'm going to open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public was to speak for or against this application. Please come forward, introduce yourself for the record. Let the record indicate no one from the public was to speak for or against this application. Therefore, I bring it back to the board for further questions.
You know, I do have just one question, and I can't tell from the building layout picture. Presumably, is this like a living room or a family room?
Sorry. So, currently where it will be installed, it is the living room. So, it'd be, there's a window currently right now where it will be installed, so that will be removed and whatnot.
Okay, and how many sides are...
In the living room?
Yeah, are you, I, I mean, not, I know the living room is probably square or square-ish, but how many outside walls do you have in the living room?
So, we actually have one, two, three, and technically four with the arch that walks in, that lets us walk into the kitchen.
Because I guess my question is, is instead of going into the side setback, is there a reason why you can't build this off of the back of the house?
Yes, because there are two bedrooms in the back of the house, and we would like it, yeah.
So, they're not an outside wall?
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that was what I was getting to.
So, there's the living room, and then kids' room, and then our bedroom.
Two outside walls, and, and, and one of them is in the front.
Correct.
You don't want to put a chimney in the front of your house.
Right.
You could technically, but...
Well, we have this wonderful window, I love.
I, I get that, I just have to ask for, you know, why here in the setback and not on another wall that may go to the rear of the house?
Yeah, no, those are questions that never came up, so...
Or in some cases, on the front of the house, because those are... Those are just what I'm... Your house, I think, is built by the same guy that built mine, I just want to throw that out there. So, I know the, I almost think I know the layout.
I see, like, the majority of our houses on that street are very similar.
You're probably right.
Okay, any other questions of the applicant?
No, sir, not for me.
Any closing comments?
Thank you for your consideration, we really appreciate your time.
Okay. With that, I'm going to close it to the public, bring it to the board, discussion.
Sounds pretty reasonable to me.
Straightforward, permitted. When I say permitted, that means building permit is needed.
Yeah, and I'm...
So, I'm real comfortable myself with that one.
Ideally, you'd like to see this off a back wall or not into the setback, because those ten-foot setbacks are pretty narrow. But I don't think that this is much of an encroachment into that, considering that you don't want to build it off the front of the house, that wouldn't make an awful lot of sense, so...
It's not like a garage or something going in there?
Yeah, I, that's what I'm saying, it's a, it's a real small approachment. And it's certainly not these folks' fault that there was a ten-foot setback rule in nineteen forty-seven or whenever the house was built, you know, to, you know, to the fifteen feet that we currently have in these zones. That's not their fault.
Yeah. Any other discussions?
No, the only rec, I'll make a motion. The only recommendation is, is that two feet and a ten-foot setback can be considerable so if the planning board or the building inspector could stay on top of that to make sure it doesn't get any deeper into the, into the, the encroachment doesn't grow to three feet or... I don't know anything about building a fireplace, so I'm just saying that encroachment is fine, but I don't want to see it sneaking out any further, you know, to further into the neighbor's... So, I'll make a motion that, I mean, is there anything else, Mr. Chair? I'm ready for the motion.
No, no, do it.
I'll make a motion that we approve. Application, I have fifty-three here, I guess I don't have the full number of it, but a variance from Article two thirty-five, Section thirty-five B, side setbacks for the installation of a covered chimney. Granting the variance is not going to be contrary to the public interest because it will be properly ventilated, so, and it will be designed and built by, well, by people, so there's no real impact there. The variance was granted, the spirit of the ordinance will be observed. It's a single-family home. It, it's, the, the ordinance is what it is. Granting the variance would do substantial justice because it would allow these folks to have the benefit of having a fireplace, and it really has no impact to the neighbors if it's constructed properly. The variance was granted, the value of the surrounding properties would not be diminished. I don't think it has any effect to the surrounding properties, really. And unnecessary hardship is that the lot is undersized to this zone, and it was built prior to our current zoning laws, so I've kind of already gone through that. And it's a reasonable request with a minimum encroachment, which is why I emphasize to make sure that encroachment doesn't grow. And that we've, we're going to allow two feet, and we mean two feet, not two feet, six inches. And there's a five-sided garage in the weirs that can testify to that. That's it.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We got a second. Discussion of the motion. There being none, all those in favor of the motion? Enjoy your fireplace. Okay, next application is 0054, 125 White Oaks Road. Setback variance. Applicant is requesting a variance from Section 6, I mean Article 6, Section 235-35A. Front setback to allow for the installation of a pavilion. The applicant here, please come forward, introduce yourself with the record, and tell us how we could be...
Thank you. My name is Eric Eisner. I'm currently the owner of 125 White Oaks Road. I purchased that in 2017 in order to retire in the next couple of years. So I've been kind of cleaning it up and taking care of some things. And I wish to put a pavilion on the side of my house for my family's use. And it, I don't know if you can see, the building area is very small. A lot of the house actually already protrudes into the setback area. And the pavilion would probably protrude into the setback area approximately 7 feet on the road, the front, front, the road frontage.
Is this pavilion attached to the house, or...
It'll be freestanding.
Freestanding? Is that a driveway in between, or is that the spacing I'm looking at there?
Um, the, the only driveway is the current driveway. Uh, there's no additional driveways going in.
But you're saying, it, okay, so again, is it close to the house, or is there a space there?
Uh, it's probably gonna be to the, to the right side of the house. Probably a 1 and 1/2 foot gap between the house and the pavilion.
Would it be on that concrete slab that you've got there, is that what...
Yes, yeah.
I guess I'm looking at... And that 75-foot setback is because it's RR2 in the front of the house already protrudes into the front of it?
Eric, it's gonna look similar to the picture you have here?
Yes.
To me, it looks like the side of the house.
Was the slab...
But the side of the house is facing the front.
No, I had, I put the slab in, um, about a year ago. I was gonna do a, a new lawn. And in the process of doing the new lawn, I dug up a patio. So I dug up that brick patio and just replaced it with the concrete patio.
Where it says white, right where the dawn is.
The road, I'm looking at this, the road is to my left, correct?
Yes.
And the driveway is kind of a white, like if you're looking at an X-ray, it's sort of like a white... That's what I'm looking at. And this would be to the right of the driveway?
Yes.
And there's 75-foot setback. What is it, what is the, that zone, I'm sorry?
It's RR2.
I'll ask you the same question I asked the chimney people. Is there any other place on this lot that you would put that pavilion?
Uh, no, not really. If I, if I did it in the back of the house, it would really, I'm trying to add a little character to the farmhouse look. And if you didn't see it, you wouldn't, it wouldn't add on...
Oh, I apologize. I didn't drive by there. I, it was one of the ones I didn't get to, get to, and that's my fault.
Almost the entire lot would be in a setback of some kind?
It would be.
Yeah.
By that RR2 standards, which are pretty hefty setbacks in that area.
Yeah, there's a very narrow building area. Like I said, most of the house is in the new restricted setbacks. And the patio and the pavilion is a, is a 20-by-7-foot slab that comes out of a side door on that front piece into the driveway. The patio does not extend further than that. And the pavilion will be approximately 3 feet back from that. So I think the encroachment is about 7 feet into the setback.
Any other questions of the applicant? At this time? There being none, you may have a seat for a second.
Thank you, sir.
Is there anybody who wishes to speak for or against this application? Please come forward at this time, introduce yourself for the record. Let the record indicate no one from the public wishes to speak for or against this application. Therefore, I bring it back to the board for further discussion.
Seems like a fairly reasonable endeavor to...
Well, it's questions, I'm not discussing, I'm sorry. Questions of the applicant. There being none, any closing comments?
No, no, sir, thank you.
With that, I close it to the public and bring it to the board for discussion. Now, Mike.
All right. It seems to be a fairly reasonable, um, project here. Being, uh, most of the building is already non-conforming anyways. It's not necessarily making it more non-conforming. And it does give us a nice spot to gather in the sun.
Slab is already there. It's been there for quite some time. Yeah, that's, that's a big consideration. That's where the slab, you're building, I'm sorry. He's building where the slab exists, right? In an effort to build a lawn, he found a slab. So at one point in time, we can presume it probably wasn't a patio there or something that...
Okay. And if that's a simulation of what it's gonna look like...
Yeah, no, I, yeah, it looks, you know, it's... Yeah.
Any other discussion? There being none, like to entertain a motion?
I'll make that motion for application number 2020-0054. At 125 White Oaks Road. The applicant is asking for a variance to, uh, i- in the setback, 75 feet from the RR2. And, uh, for a pavilion for entertainment of the family. And it would not be contrary to the public interest. It's within its, uh, within its rights, as it were, on the property. Certainly, uh, the spirit would be observed, because it would be the right of the person to exercise on his property what he would like to build within the boundaries of our, our ordinances. Yes, you would imagine it would raise the value of the property, and that would be substantial justice. And no, I don't believe that it would, uh, draw down the, um, draw down the value of others around it. As for number 5, the proposed use is a reasonable one, because it's not impacting anybody else unnecessarily or inhibiting the use of their property. So I think it's fair that we should accept this.
Yeah, I, I second that.
Okay, so we have a motion. We have a second. Discussion of the motion. There being none, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Okay, enjoy. All right. Next is application 0055SE. 59 Doe Avenue. Exception for off-premise sign application. Uh, applicant is requesting a special exception for Article 7, Section 235-57 to allow of an off-premise sign, a sign to be located at 233 Endicott Street North. Would the applicant please come forward, explain?
Good evening.
If we can help you.
Keith O'Leary for, uh, the, the business name is called Craft Beer Exchange. And we're in the process of opening up in a couple of weeks, thank God. And what we'd like to do, we've been in contact with the Village of Winnipeg Condominium Association. We have developed a lease agreement with these folks to be able to utilize a footing that, that used to house an old sign back in the 1970s, I believe, for the French restaurant that, that used to be on our property. So we're looking at this sign as a critical component of our marketing plan to be able to let people know that we're 1 block away from Endicott Street on Doe Ave. So I think you folks are all familiar with the area. Quick right on Tower as you're going north, left on to Warner Ave, and run right into our property, Doe Ave. So, um, we're looking for consideration to develop this sign. We've got agreement from the Winnipeg村民 Village, and everyone seems to be gung ho that we go ahead and move forward with the sign. Happy to entertain, entertain any questions.
Is this gonna be a lit sign?
No, sir. Uh, we, we're, we're doing old school. We're gonna do a nice wooden sign like we've put up in front of our property. And it's just gonna be a double-sided sign on each side of the 12-foot post, 6-by-6 posts that we propose. No, no digital sign, but LED, uh, focused on, on lighting on the sign for, for evening viewing.
You're gonna build it right where the old sign was?
Correct.
I remember this sign.
Yeah, we, was it, do I have it correct? Was it the old French restaurant sign?
I can't remember that, but the, the shape of the sign is unique, so it jumps out.
It was an oval, it was an oval-based...
It triggered something when I looked at the picture, and I said, oh, yeah, I remember that sign.
It was an oval-based sign that we found on the property. So our assumption was they, they had the, the right to use that way back when. I don't even know if it was before the Winnipeg村民, or condos were built.
It's a mighty fine rusticated post there. You're not gonna be missing that, right?
It looks like, uh, by all accounts, we won't be able to use that structure.
Yeah.
Because it's, it's just too rotted away. But the plan is to not deviate from what you see there today. And we won't even have the structure of the oval. We'll only have the 6-by, the 6-by-6 straight-on post vertical with a sign on either side of it.
And you're not planning on cutting down any of the trees around it for better visibility? Is that within our domain? I, I don't know.
They've given us permission as part of our lease agreement to clear the foliage away from the sign as needed to, you know, to make use and utilization of the sign. But we don't propose to cut down any trees. It's really just branches and foliage, that's there.
And this, this isn't gonna create any kind of a visual hazard coming out of the end of that road, is it? Nope.
Dean, does this add to the square footage of the signs for the vintage of Winnipeg村民, since it's one property? And you're supposed to only have one sign on the property? So this is adding a secondary sign to the property? Because even though they're gonna lease it to them, it doesn't alleviate the village of signage requirements?
Give me a moment.
And these are gonna be 6-foot by 4-foot signs?
Yeah, approximately, that was what we proposed. So 4 feet across, 6 feet by... Actually would be a smaller footprint than, than was there with the sign.
You started about 2 years ago on this project?
Yes.
Before, you came before the planning board?
We did, yeah. So we, uh, it's been my wife and myself primarily doing most of the work and, of course, hiring the, the appropriate licensed electricians and plumbers, et cetera. So it's been a labor of love for us in developing, rehabbing this old building, which we've done. And, um, as I said, we're about to, uh, yeah, uh, we've got our liquor license, we've got our food service license, and we're trying to open up for August 1st.
I, I would say, uh, Mr. Chair, that the, uh, this specific section of the ordinance deals with just an off-premise sign. In other words, you've got a business over here, and the sign's someplace else. It's not on the, on the premise of the main business. I don't believe that it has any impact, one way or the other, on the condominium, uh, property from the standpoint of what they're allowed for signs. Because this is really an off-premise sign for the brewery. Not, it's not associated with the condominium project. It's on their land, and they're giving the lease, but it's not their sign. That would be my interpretation of the, of this provision of the ordinance.
Okay. But that's a good question.
Any other questions of the applicant at this time? There being none, you may have a seat.
Thank you.
I'm gonna open it up for the public and ask if anybody from the public wishes to speak for or against this application. Please come forward at this time and introduce yourself with the record. Let the record indicate no one from the public wishes to speak for or against this application. Bring it back to the board for further questions of the applicant. There being none, any closing statements?
Hope you appreciate the time and consideration.
With that, I close it to the public and bring it to the board for discussion.
Certainly, any, uh, improvement to that rusticated post would certainly make the corner look a little bit better. I think it's reasonable in that it is, uh, you know, in the weirs very much. And yet, it would be difficult, because of the one-way, uh, traffic that goes around Cumbes and some other stuff, to really be able to put a sign out where people will drive by and say, wow, I want a witch's brew. And I think, uh, I think it's reasonable, especially in the context of what the weirs is supposed to be, which is open for visitors.
And I'm compelled by the fact there's already something there, and this will be an improvement on what's there. This is also gonna be a wooden sign, not a metal sign, right? Wooden post?
I don't know.
Wooden post, sir?
That's for a wooden sign.
Wooden post, wooden sign.
Wooden post with, uh, it's, it's very, it's...
We haven't contracted for the sign, because we wanted to go through this process. It would be a wooden post, and it may be a metal sign, just a fabricated metal sign on either side of it, 4 feet by 6 feet. But we'd look, we'd also look at a wooden sign as we, as we created for the sign for the business on the property.
So what size signs are permitted on a off-site sign? Because I guess it must be spelled out separately, because there's nothing...
It is, and I don't think I have that chart with me.
We would certainly build in accordance with...
We don't do a lot of off-premise signs, so...
Now, this is my first, that's why I'm inquisitive.
I don't, I, there is a size. I don't know what it is right off the top of my head, though.
Would it, do you feel it would be larger than four by six or something less? Four by six is what they call it.
I wouldn't want to take a guess, Mike.
All right.
Oh, let's see, this is a freestanding sign. It's not on a building, so it's signed. I'm looking through our sign ordinances here, trying to find if that's addressed. Literally everything you could imagine to do with signs is so close in this ordinance.
I'm just, I, you can go ahead and have a seat, sir. This is my first in 14 years or 15 years of doing this. And I, it goes, to me, an off-site sign borders on several things, not necessarily of this and tonight, but it borders on being a billboard. It borders closely to being so many different things called by so many different things that it, today's brewery sign can be tomorrow's something else. Because it goes with the lease, doesn't, but the ability to put an off-site sign there rides with the property. Whose property does that ride with? I have many.
I think you can.
If he has a five.
I would suggest that you put a condition on it that if the business doesn't exist any longer, that the sign's got to be removed.
Okay. I like that idea.
They have a five-year lease for the sign now. If they extended it to 10, would that still be?
No, that would be fine. It's just, but, you know, I mean, we wish them all the luck and want them to be successful, but.
Absolutely.
Business is business, and if for some reason the business doesn't exist, then the sign would have to go away.
To the ground.
Winna Pusaki has always been tough on signs.
Yes, we have.
And they're very tough on on-premise signs. In fact, I I can think of only two in the entire city right now. One's on Fair Street and Court Street, and one's on Elm Street and Franklin Street.
There's one in the wiers. I know one in the wiers.
Okay, I think I find what you're looking for.
It's meant to be a very unusual situation, which is why it comes to you for consideration.
Let's see. That's a sandwich board. Okay, residential art. Commercial resort. Dynamic. So how would you call freestanding? This would be a freestanding sign, so we'll go to Rule 11. Maximum size of one face shall not exceed 50% of the map. Okay. Whatever is lit, height limit is 20 feet. This is table, table six, attachment five. And I'm under the commercial resort district, and it requires an exception. And it says Rule 11, and then you go down and it says Rule 11. This is where I am. It's just identifying which kind. It's not portable, not a wall sign. It's not a suspended sign. It's, it's a freestanding sign.
Correct.
And we are in the commercial resort area.
Yep.
So you apply restriction 11, which goes down here. And it says maximum size of the face shall not exceed 50%. So that just means it has to be two-sided, you know? But it doesn't really give a dimension on it. That's the thing. It's like, when you thought they thought of everything, apparently they did not. So does that mean we can limit the square footage of the sign? Dean?
The at the top of that chart, and we just recently
Yeah.
redid this chart earlier this year.
Yeah.
But I don't think that we changed that number. It's 216 square feet for the CR district with a total of three signs.
Ah, yes.
I don't think that they're anything close to that overall.
Oh, God, no. That's a big sign. And how big did he say he wanted the sign to be?
Twenty-four, 24 square feet.
Per side.
So it'd be six by four per side?
Yeah.
Okay. No, total, so it'd be 12. Three by four.
Six by four times two would be 20, 48.
Forty-eight, yeah, okay, all right. And that's well over the 216.
And that would come out of the 216, yes.
And then we have the minimal space taken up by the post.
Yep.
Which is probably, what, going to be a six by six or four by four or something?
We don't count the post.
Oh, you don't count the post?
No, just the actual sign area.
Just the actual sign. You know, it's funny, I'm less concerned with the overall height than I am with the overall lower level because it's a busy intersection and I don't want anything to impede traffic coming out of Tower Street.
It'll be high enough for that.
It will be high, and that's.
The stop sign doesn't impede anybody coming out, so I don't think it'll be.
Fair mic, and it's well taken, but I'm just saying, I don't want a viewed, a viewed thing. I don't want us to create a problem with sight lines.
No, these are good points and good questions, and we will ensure that they meet the, otherwise meet the sign ordinance, and if they don't, then they'll have to come back here.
I agree. I'm with Mike. I, this business, wiers is open for business. There's a structure there. It's ugly. It, you know, this would be an improvement, but I would like to restrict it to just this business, if that's possible.
Absolutely.
And that if they should go out of business, the cost of removing the sign in its entirety is borne by them somehow.
Well, then you are asking for a bond of removal to be placed with the city.
Is that appropriate request? I don't know.
If a business goes out of business, there's nothing to go after to get money.
I know, I know, I know.
You know, so.
We're going to end up at the bottom of the pole.
Right. So the only other thing is you get a surety bond set with the city, and Dean knows about all that because they do surety bonds on all kinds of projects for lack of compliance, lack of completion, lack of this or lack of that, so.
Should we continue, should we contingent, make this sign contingent on that if we go forward with?
If you want to make sure that it's going to go away.
Well, yeah, I, I think that we're, we're on slippery slope, quote-unquote, as we is, we are with this corner. There is something there that for oversight or whatever reason just hasn't rotted away and blown over in a storm.
Another way to approach it would be, because I don't.
Wouldn't have to be.
I don't want to manage a bond or a security for
I see what you're saying, yeah, I know.
20 years or whatever it turns out to be. But so the, the other way to do it would be to, if the, if the business does not remove the sign and the city has to, then we would place a lien on the property.
Okay, that, that works. I mean, I'm trying to protect our interests.
We'll get our money back when the property is sold.
That's better than the bond.
And that's probably, you're right, it's probably more manageable for all parties involved to, to, to put a bond on it. Any other thing, you know?
And that it dies with the business.
It dies with, the permit dies with the business.
You know, I don't want to get stuck in that loop either, okay?
But if it gets sold to another same type.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a point. We're out in one of those.
Oh, it's where?
We're out in an array, a computer array, from which we may never return.
Before the ink dried, we've already got that situation, so. So you can put those conditions in there.
But is it wise? It's the question. I, I'm really, I'm like you. I'm on definitely uncharted waters on this. I think the size and the location are appropriate, but mostly because I think that because it's already there. And that I do want to promote businesses in the wiers. I really do, especially local businesses like this. It's the reason we have a commercial resort district.
I'm all for encouraging, I just want to make sure if it goes away, it's supposed to, when and appropriately it's supposed to.
How much is it going to cost if we have to send a crew with a bucket truck up to take the sign down and throw it away?
Oh, it doesn't matter. You just encumber the property, so.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's, it's just, yeah.
Do you own the property that this is, that the brewery's own, or do you lease it?
No, we own the property.
Okay.
Oh, so you own this particular piece of property?
No.
Not where the sign is.
Not where the sign is.
Where the business is.
Yeah. Yeah, well, I'm saying, but you have a contract with the people of Winna Pusaki Village, I think you said?
That's correct.
For the use of this particular corner? Can that, can we ask that that be put on file with you? That we have something that?
Yeah, it's a letter here in the package.
There is a letter. Okay, great.
All right. I think we've discussed this enough. How about a motion?
I'll give it a shot, but I really encourage any of you other board members that if I.
Oh, we're going to have some conditions, so.
Well, and I mean, and if I don't make myself completely clear.
Keep going. You're doing fine.
Then, you know, jump in. And say, shouldn't we do this or that? Or you've forgotten this or that?
It, just before we really launch here.
Yeah, okay.
You know, I'm not sure, you can say what this was, and I've been around there a little bit. I don't even know if it hadn't been for the Winna Pusaki Village back in the day.
I, I don't know that it was or it wasn't. I just know that I remember, I know the structure. I've seen it. It's odd enough that it jumps up.
Just on the thought of off-premise, because there are very few off-premise signs. And most of them have grandfathered those.
And.
Like I said, I've been on board for a long time, and I don't think I've ever seen one come before the board, so.
Can we restrict this particular piece of property to one off-premise sign? Would that be an acceptable condition?
I'm not sure who we're.
I'm not really sure what, where we're going here.
What property is getting the rights?
Yeah, that's the other thing, is we have the correct applicant.
And I'm not sure who's getting the special exception, is the Winna Pusaki?
Good point.
Because they're the owner of the property, or is?
I'm inclined to go with the owner of the property. They're the one that ultimately going to bear responsibility for this sign. A big truck slams into it. You know, I mean, anything can happen. Should the property owner be here?
I, 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 I'm, I'm really. I'm leaning towards having the attorney review this myself.
That's actually.
Because I, I have, I don't know who we're giving a special exception to. And I, I know who the applicant is, but I don't know what property is going to ride with.
Right.
Or go with.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. We know who's going to build it, and we know who owns the property, but they're not both here tonight, so we can't ask the property owner any questions. We should condition it, who's responsible for it?
We'll table it until we get some review.
We could do that. I, I can, is that a motion, Mike? Because I would second that.
I'm just discussing.
We're still discussing right now. I.
A, an interjector?
Please.
Yeah, it's just, when, when, when we, when we were negotiating this with the Village of Winna Pusaki, we built all, if you read the, the leasing agreement, it details who's going to be responsible for every aspect of that sign, and that is us. We're taking full ownership of everything associated with that sign, alleviating them of any kind of responsibility for the sign. So that's how we structured the lease.
But I got a, properties change hands. There's a lot of things that goes with this stuff in my 18, well, since 1996, doing zoning issues and stuff like this. And there's usually I have to go with my gut because if it feels, I'm sorry, I.
I understand.
I don't know that this is going to, if we waited a month and got our attorneys to review all this, that it's going to really devastate anything within one month.
I, I completely understand the, the question being proposed and, and why you're asking the question. So I certainly want to, my wife and I want to do everything, you know, by the book and make sure that
Sure you do.
That we're not opening up a can of worms for us or you or the city.
Well, no, it's like I said, this is, to me, I've been on this board here in the city for a real long time, 18 years, 17 years. And this is the first one that I can remember. And so it does lead to a lot of different questions and viewpoints and stuff because another thought had just hit my head as we're talking, you got a lease, can you sublet it to something else? There's nothing.
It states in, no.
But I need to make sure that we have protection for all these different views, okay? Because we are the citizenry of the city, and so that's what we have to protect. And and I have to admit one thing, I have not ever had to sit here in a long time and say, I wouldn't mind having the attorney review this. And I don't say that too often.
Right, because.
If ever.
I think your point that you hit, you started that on is right to the heart of it, is that we, are we dealing with the right person? No offense. You don't own that property.
Right.
So we're here giving you permission to do something on somebody else's property. And I know we have a contract, but how binding is that if that property fails? If, if it gets sold, if, do you know what I mean? And I know those things are a matter for a judge, which is, I think it's a prudent decision on, a thing on Steve's part to get the lawyers to weigh in on. And we may have to ask the owners of the property or some representative of theirs to come in and, and talk to Dean at best, or, you know what I'm saying?
I do.
Okay.
So, you know, we, we appreciate you forwarding this with consideration, so, you know, I, I do believe that we have done everything in our power to try to make this.
And we're not saying you haven't.
We haven't said, we're, we're not saying that. We're just wanting to make sure we get all the, the Ts crossed and the Is dotted so that everybody can have a harmonious marriage together with this. And because we want to see you successful, we want to see.
We appreciate that.
You grow in everything, okay? So it has nothing to do with other than some legalities of what is transpiring, okay?
Completely concur, yeah. Thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, we're sorry for the holdup because, you know, we know you've lost the whole summer because of something we can't control, so, you know.
But in no way does it inhibit him from opening his.
Opening his business.
No, there's nothing to do with that. They're two separate and distinct entities.
There's the internet out there, too.
Yeah, I mean, there are other ways, you know, that you could actually just throw it out, but.
So in the spirit of everything, I would like to make a motion, A, that we have the attorney review this, answer those questions that I've been asking. You know, who does this actually special exception belong to? Is it the property owner or the lease, the leaser or the leasee? And does the document setting forth comply with us so that it doesn't put us in it? Because can they sublet the sign? Can we have, now we can put a little digital sign up there because the wiers doesn't have anything, and now you've got a billboard electronic sign. It has nothing to do with you.
And every other business want to put a sign there, you know, and how, if we don't say no, how do we do that legally? You know, this is.
So.
Yeah, just little things like that. Sorry, but not, you know.
And we'll put you on the first, because this is a continuation, you'll be at the top of the agenda next month.
Fantastic.
Okay.
Much appreciated. Thank you for the consideration and.
Well, good luck in your business.
We're hoping for the best. Have a great night. Thank you.
Yeah, you got a second on that? I'll second that.
Mike seconds it?
All.
All those in favor?
Aye.
That goes in that pile. That goes in that pile. Two and a half. Okay. Seven Foster Street. Setback variance, applicant, uh, zero, zero, fifty-six variance, applicant is requesting variance from Article Six, Section two thirty-five dash thirty-five B. Rear setback to allow for the demolition and reconstruction of a addition. Could the applicant please come forward, introduce yourself to the record, and tell us how we might help?
Well, ladies and gentlemen aboard, I'm Lionel Berthume from Seven Foster Ave. Um, what I'm looking to do is, basically, uh, I bought, uh, this old house, um, in two thousand and eight. Um, it had, it looks like an original structure, and then a couple of additional, uh, structures in the back, um, added, uh, long before the, um, you know, different zoning rules were put in place. Um, the, there's a two, um, I'm not sure if I have the map here, but basically, in the back of the house, there's a twenty by twenty, uh, single-story, um, rooms, and what I'm looking to do is not change the footprint at all, um, just go in and, and tear down the two back, uh, ten by ten rooms, um, and put up a, the, a twenty by twenty in its place, basically just rebuilding what's there. And the, while doing that, I'm looking to, uh, go up, the, the front of the house, uh, is two-story, and so while doing the back, I, I wanted to go up two stories and, and basically match it to the original house. Um, so it's just kind of taking down one and putting up another.
Any questions of the applicant?
I don't really have any. I think it's pretty cut and dry.
If there's no questions of the applicant, you may have a seat. I'd like to open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public wishes to speak for or against this application. Please come forward at this time and introduce yourself for the record. That the record indicate no one from the public wishes to speak for or against this application, I'll bring it back to the board for any further discussion. Or questions. There being none, any closing comments?
No, sir. Thank you for the consideration.
Okay, with that, I close it and bring it to the board for discussion.
We have many pictures here, so basically, we're...
Yeah.
tearing down the one-story, and then make it into a two-story.
Right. If, if all he did was replace, he would not need a variance.
So he just needs a variance to go up?
Yeah, increasing, increasing the bulk.
Stay right within their own footprint, as he said.
Increasing the bulk.
It's an impossible neighborhood. I mean, there's peanut-sized lots compared to a regular building.
Yeah, but they are what they...
They are what they are. I agree. You know, I mean, everybody knows that where they buy a house there, that this is a tough lot.
This is enjoy your neighbors. The land of enjoying your neighbor. Okay, no further discussion, uh, entertaining motion? Oh, is that what it is?
Oh, it's the fan. Yeah, for a while there, I kept thinking it was you typing. Going right along there.
A motion?
So it's really just going up is the only part of the, the variance here?
Correct.
So this will be application number twenty, twenty dash zero, zero, five, six, Seven Foster Ave, Laconia, New Hampshire. Uh, the request is, uh, for demo and reconstruction of a section of the house staying within the footprint, but raising up one level. So not be contrary to par- public interest, because there's no change in the footprint. Benefits is that the family will have more space. Any house that gets taken care of down there improves the property values, because they are uniquely, uh, well-used. So it would not diminish the value of the surrounding properties. And once again, the proposed use is a reas- a reasonable one, because the original structure was built prior to building codes and has been there a long time, and so we can improve the neighborhood and, uh, improve this property.
We have a motion. Do we got a second?
Yes, I did. I'm sorry.
Oh, I didn't hear it. I apologize. We have a second? Discussion of the motion? There being none, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
It passes. Okay. The next application is zero, zero, five, eight, variance thirty Summit Ave. Uh, applicant is requesting variance from Article Six, Section two thirty-five dash thirty-five B. Side setback to allow the addition of a garage bay. Would the applicant please come forward, introduce yourself for the record, and tell us how we may help you?
Good evening. Uh, my name's Steve Olson. Um, me and my wife purchased a property at thirty Summit Ave in Laconia. We are currently renovating that house, um, as we speak. Uh, we're here today to go for a variance on a third stall garage. The garage is gonna be twelve by twenty-two. The association, the Governor's Island Association, has already reviewed this in a, and on their behalf, they're fine with it. The only person that this would impact would be Andrew Hosmeyer, um, where he lives. And I have some pictures here showing that, um, if you can see here, this is the end of my existing garage, and this is Mr. Hosmeyer's house. And there's at least two hundred and fifty feet, I would say. Um, and, um, I ac- actually have a letter, email from Mr. Hosmeyer, saying that he has no problem with the addition onto the garage.
Does the city have any of this in the file?
No, I don't have that email.
Would you please provide those documents that you're entertaining as evidence to the, uh, city?
Thank you.
Yes.
Uh, that picture that you showed us, this one here?
Um, you give us that? I can't see that from there. Sorry.
That's the, uh, the photo writer.
Um, okay, yeah, so this is my existing, uh, two-car garage.
Okay, that was my question. Is that, and you're gonna build the other garage, uh, stall right beside it?
Right there, and that's the picture I was showing you, this side of the house and Mr. Hosmeyer's house, so.
Are there any tree buffers or anything between your house and his house?
He has quite a few large, um, pictures on his side, on the side of his house, yes.
So his house really isn't right up to the setback?
On, no.
On his side. You're the one that's got the setback problem?
Yes.
And you're going with the addition, it'll bring it within seven feet, three inches? Is that what I'm seeing?
It will...
To the, to the line?
Is that correct? Yes, that is correct.
Let's call it seven feet, just to...
Seven feet. Come on, I want to play three.
Um...
Yes, ma'am.
See what the set... How big is your lot?
Uh, it's one point six, I believe, acres.
SFR.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
It's an SFR lot.
Single-family residence.
Shorefront. Shoref- shorefront resort.
Uh, shorefront resort, okay, that was what I didn't hear. I'm just looking at the...
Shorefront residential, sorry. Shorefront residential.
What is the setback there now? Has it always been ten feet, or is it, it's bigger? Is he already in the setback?
Um, not quite.
No, he's not already. Not, not in the present.
It's ten.
What is the hardship that is brought upon this to have a third car garage?
May I speak?
Please, just introduce yourself.
Oh, I'm Carl Olson. I'm the wife.
Okay.
So when you live in an association that we've just joined...
Ah.
You cannot have any items out whatsoever, and when you park your two cars in a garage, you have no room for a lawnmower or any of your items. So we need to put these items in a garage stall, or in our association, they fine you having such items out. So we need to be able to put items away, or we get in trouble. So if you look at anybody who is on Governor's Island, they have multiple garages, and I do mean more than three. For us, asking for a third is very minimal compared to most of those houses on Governor's Island, so...
But you're not on Governor's Island, you're...
We are in the association, sir.
But you are a part of the association.
Yes.
So how does the house on the corner of the bridge?
I followed that lawsuit for about fifteen minutes. It's still out there. Don't even go there.
Or is that just because?
We've...
Lit- litigation is still pending.
It's just, it's just say that deed restrictions trump zoning. And that's really all you need to know.
So we're new out there, and, um, we're just trying to follow, um, the guidance that we've been given. So in order to fi- follow that guidance, we've asked for that third stall garage. And Andrew Hosmeyer's been generous enough to allow us to do that.
Yeah, uh, okay. I'll ask you the same question I've asked other applicants. Is there any reason why you can't build a storage shed behind that garage?
Um, we have a pool back there, ma'am.
Ah, so there is, there is something back there that is stopping you. Yeah, there is something stopping you from building a shed or a storage, piece of storage equipment. In this entire property, you can't find room for a...
The way that, way it is, it's, um, we've looked at, this is our builder's bed.
Oh, hi. How are you?
Um, so we've looked, we've entertained everything that we can, and, um, we, this is our hardship.
Okay.
It's a very linear lot. It's narrow, not a lot of road frontage, but it's deep. Uh, and with the house being built years and years ago, it was, for whatever reason, placed tight to, it favored this side of the property, unfortunately. And there's already an existing garage on that side, so logically you would build your new garage and attach to the existing garage.
Is that pool a dug pool, or is it an above-ground pool?
Looks dug.
It's an in-ground pool.
In-ground.
It's an in-ground pool, so that's kind of part of the permanent landscape of that house.
So you're looking to go approximately, what is that, ten-foot setback?
Correct.
So you're looking to go about three feet?
Yeah, three foot nine.
Three foot nine? And had to be the deepest side, be in that back corner?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions? With that, y'all may have a seat just for a brief second, and, uh, I'm gonna open it up to the public and ask if anybody from the public wishes to speak for or against this application. Please come forward at this time and introduce yourself for the record. Don't everybody break the door down. That the record indicate no one from the public wishes to speak for or against this application, bring it back to the board for further questions of the applicant. There being none, any closing comments?
No, thank you.
With that, I'm gonna close it to the public, bring it to the board for discussion.
This is exactly the reason that ZBBA started. It's a hardship of the land.
Well, it's not a hardship of the land. It's a hardship of the pool. That's not part of the land. It's not a steep slope.
It's a hardship of the association.
It's a, and it's, well, these, so, you know, and one could make an argument that associations are hardships, but that's a caveat, embtor kind of thing, buyer beware.
Right. That's why I asked, why, what, what, why is it a hardship, and that's why...
Yeah, it's a good question.
And the whole purpose of it was the fact that, so they could actually live on their property as normal people.
Never seen that one at law. You really don't wanna go in there and start building a detached ADU, that much I can tell you.
Oh, no, no.
Oh, no, 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 no. You do not wanna even think of that.
So... All right.
Oh, I don't know what to say. I, I can't help but thinking it's a big piece of property, but I know they don't wanna build it on the front of the property. There's gotta be someplace on that property where you could put a reasonably sized storage shed to accomplish what they need to accomplish without going into the side setback. I know there's a pool, a dug pool in the back, but...
You got a lot more room back there.
Yeah, that's what I'm looking for. I don't know if that made my, I was looking for a lot map, and I, oh, I do have it.
You do?
Oh, there is really a lot of room back there. There's places to go other than the side setback.
Only if you could get...
Well, I mean...
Have you all considered building a larger garage in the backyard instead?
We have a fence back there that's already established, so I would have to rip down a very expensive fence.
Cut it down, probably, if you have, you know, access to it. You still need to go through the...
But it's not expensive to build another.
Yes, if I may, um, I think one thing the board should consider is that, given the proximity to the water, I'm gonna, I'm gonna guess that some of the items that need to be stored are on trailers. And if you put another garage or a storage shed or whatever, it's, it's a question of, now you gotta extend the driveway all that way and... Gotta make, you have water runoff, et cetera, as, as opposed to just utilizing the existing driveway. Just for your consideration.
Sure.
Sure.
How far into the setback will the building go?
Three feet on the furthest corner.
I see, so it's not completely parallel, the lot is, yeah, I see.
Looks like the front cover might be like a foot or two in, and then it extends to about three feet nine inches, somewhere around that way.
It's really, the three feet is not much, and if Mr. Holmes or doesn't mind.
Nobody's...
You know, but if it was my property, I would build a little driveway going to the back and put a big four-car garage back there, but, you know, if you want to have a third bay, I don't see a problem with going three feet. Seeing that the neighboring house is quite a distance from it anyhow.
That's a big factor, but that's not, you know, I mean, that's what it is now, it's not way, I mean, we have to think to the future, do you know what I mean? That's, that's the downside of these variances, is they run with the lot. And while the Hosmers may live there now, and you may live there now, some guy down the road may decide he doesn't want his property that closely budded by a neighbor, and I have some personal experience with side setbacks too, and it's not a good one. But that's neither here nor there, I just, it's a big lot, there's so many options back there. I'm not saying any of them are expensive, it's not cheap to put a third bay on a garage either.
So, we can entertain a motion and...
Contractor, I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
No problem, Dennis.
Dennis?
Dennis.
We're only actually going two feet nine inches into the, over the line here?
Twelve-foot garage, they're looking.
Yes, but this is where it's allowed to come up to this line, so we're, but you're gonna end up with seven feet three inches from the property, nine inches from the property line, so you're only going two feet nine inches over this edge. Which, I'm...
Thank you.
So we're gonna make the motion that we accept the application?
Okay, I do, actually, I did have one more question.
Sure.
Either the applicant, or you brought something to mind, and I apologize. How does your pool person access the back if you have a problem? How do you get back there? If you needed to bring a vehicle back there, either for a major renovation on a pool, or it, it, do you ever, has that ever come up? I mean, can you...
They would have to go around the other side of the house.
They would have to go around the other side of the house. I, I'm also leery of creating some sort of an easement that may encroach on the neighbor's property in terms of access to the back of the lot. Okay, so they, so if they were to have a problem with their pool or something back there?
Right.
The access would be on the wider side of the lot?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it was just a question, I just wanted, I just wanted to know, because somebody's gotta get back there for some reason with a vehicle, with a pool, you know, or, you know, somehow that pool got there, and it wasn't lugging bricks around the house.
So, Michael?
So, go ahead.
So, variance 0058, 30 Summit Avenue. Can you give them a variance to extend their garage and make a third bay? Approaches into the setback only 2.9 feet, two feet nine inches, to my knowledge. And it's not really against the public interest. It fits in with the neighborhood. The variance granted, the ordinance would be observed because there's a great space between the garage and the neighboring home, and the neighbor doesn't seem to object to it. It would do substantial justice, so they could have a third bay and keep their junk out of the backyard. If the variance is granted, the values of this property probably should not be diminished because it's a little closer to the side yard, and no relationship exists between general public or the ordinance, provided application property because the efficient of the garage would only affect the neighbor who supports the ordinance, and it's reasonable use of that property.
So we got a motion? We got a second?
I'll second it.
We have a second, discussion of the motion. All those in favor of the motion? All those opposed? It passes 4-1.
Enjoy your new bay.
Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
So is this...
This it?
No, there's other business, is that, if they're not hearing stuff, do we, did they want it moved to another meeting, or, I'm kinda unclear?
Um, I thought it was my understanding that you relied on the written submission.
Okay, that's what I was thinking, because we don't allow them to talk anyway.
Right.
Okay, well, then there's no point in them being here.
So.
Alright, so...
Alright, other business. 0030 rehearing, 7:30 in the Koch Street North rehearing request.
I'll open the discussion for the point of discussion, and I'm not gonna support this. I think we were on good, solid ground before, the ordinance is the ordinance. There have been recent tweaks to that ordinance about self-storage within that zone. City Council, uh, this planning department just went through it, and for another matter, reviewed the entire ordinance. It's not an old ordinance, it's about ten years old, but it, the point of the ordinance, not even the spirit of the ordinance, was that, that the city council, and I have talked to a couple of people that had some firsthand knowledge of this, the point of this ordinance is not to have self-storage in this district. The remedy, if you will, is to go to city council and see if they will readdress the ordinance. I don't want to be the one that readdresses the ordinance. Okay, I, I didn't know, I'm just, that's my point in all of this, is that we are not... Yeah, and I felt that from the beginning, and that's why I, I made the motion to deny it on two grounds, where the spirit of the ordinance is clearly violated, and that, you know, there's no real hardship, there's, and he bought the property knowing of the restriction. That's, that is what it is. And I'm not gonna be intimidated to not go to court if we have to, because that's not my problem.
I found out about that less than a year earlier, we denied another person's, seemed...
Yeah, I'm less concerned about the precedent that we set, in more of the intent of the city council. When they imposed this ordinance, and then when they reviewed this whole general ordinance, maybe not this little part of it, do you know what I mean? But when they reviewed the ordinance two years ago, if that, and they could have changed anything within that ordinance in that zone at the time, the discussions were exhaustive. And, and one of the suggestions made, although not to sell storage, was that the city have control within a certain number of feet on either side of the highway, and that to allow other uses of what's visible through the strip, and they chose specifically not to do that. And that's why I'm really against, and I don't want to rehear it, because I'm not, nothing, nothing is gonna change my mind on this, except for a Supreme Court ruling, and even then, I wouldn't be happy. If the ci, if they want to take it up with the city council, I suggest that that's their, that that's their next avenue, and maybe the city council can tweak this ordinance again, obviously, we change ordinances all the time, that's their job. So I've said my piece, and that's it.
Well spoken.
Michael?
In that they're in agreement with that, is that there are places that we have zoned for storage and stuff like that, but it keeps coming back and back and back. What is the highest and best use of some of this land out there, certainly if we looked at East Coast Flightcraft, you know, they could fill it up out there, there's no reason that it's flat enough, you know, they, if they want to sell the East Coast, would we stop if East Coast flattened and put up a bunch of storage buildings for boats?
And I agree, but the point is, is that it's up to city council to make that decision and not us.
But is this allowable in a, an exception or a variance?
In my humble opinion, no. I, I just think that we denied it for reasons last week, and I stand by those reasons. And I apologize to the guy that bought the property, but he knew this going into it, and...
The question is whether we erred in our judgment.
I didn't, I do not believe I did, now, that's, I could, again, we could go 4-1 again, and I think we, I think Mike voted to support it the last time, to be honest with you.
Yes.
But I, I'm one to vote, I'm one of five, I made my point, and I'm gonna shut up now, the rest of you guys can decide whatever you want to do.
What's the request before us tonight, Steve?
Just to rehear it.
It's to rehear it, that we erred in our judgment, and that there's reasonable doubt to rehear it.
I haven't seen anything that's changed.
Okay, so, wanna hear a motion? Reclined.
Reclined the request. Well, that I'll support, I second that.
Okay, so we have it, a motion, discussion of the motion, there being none, all those...
Well, let's discuss a little bit more, Steve, before we go.
Absolutely.
What is he proposing exactly to do here?
Put some warehouses in, damn.
In back of the woods, you can't see him from the road.
Well, now, now, it's a fairly open lot. Let's say it's a, it's probably, you know, in that area, there's probably twenty-something acres of open area.
I've only looked down that there road, I haven't driven up there, in there.
Apparently, great deal of it is wet, so it's, it's not, it's not a great lot.
Something's gonna go there.
Wanted to put there the same thing, I believe, A. Mitchell wanted to put on all that flat land on the right side of where the old volcano used to be, all that flat land. There was dreams and aspirations to have that filled with warehouses. The same as going down, what's that road in front of the Broken Spoke, or beside the Broken Spoke?
Oh, yeah, that was the East Coast, that was the East Coast one that he was talking about.
That is, uh, Watson Road down to Cedar Road, yeah.
The same as, there was, I think it was close to a million square feet of, of under-roofed storage. Along with the same line at the other end, they wanted to take the church and make that into a storage place.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, which is now some beautiful homes.
Yep.
So, to, to say that we erred in the best, highest use of property, and we've seen the afterworks of, of, of what could be, which, what is there, four homes there now, beautiful homes, three or, at least three beautiful homes, got rid of the church, right? Okay, so, to me...
If we let them use the church for storage, those nice homes wouldn't be there.
Correct.
We'd just have a storage facility.
Right.
Yeah.
Same thing as the A. Mitchell on the top of the hill.
Yeah.
If you're going to have a pay-in, uh, storage.
And, and again, I reiterate, to me, this is less about, is this a great location for something like this? It very well may be, just like East Coast Flight, however, this keeps coming up before the city council, and they do not change it.
Well, there's no reason to change it, because they don't want to change it, obviously, and which, there's nothing wrong with that. They have set forth the direction, to me, of how they wish the weirs to come out on the other side, and not to piecemeal it into some other Frankenstein.
And, and I agree, and, and if, I mean, I, I encouraged this guy to, to take it up with the city council, and I encourage the city council to revisit this if we keep denying similar applications, but I just go once again, I go to the intent of what the city council intended, and they did not intend, and they specifically prohibited spell storage in this zone, because you're right, it's not consistent with what their vision is.
But you have some up the hill, while you're going on about that, you have it up the hill right next to the Make Yourself Happy shop there. There's some storage in there.
Um, I, that could be pre-ordinance, all I know is, is what I'm dealing with now.
Thank you, Michael, I need to...
Make yourself happy, people talk to...
Once a day, you need to have a good laugh.
But just saying that, in that area there, and that resort, resort commercial, not in a large manner by any means, and there's a couple other pieces in there currently for sale, that could be...
If they've got storage there, it is done by code, so, or they would have came before us, and
Yeah.
they didn't, so my, might be presumptuous of me, but it must have been acceptable what they're doing as a business.
Unless it pre-existed that, you know, unless it pre-existed...
I think that's the old leather shop you're talking about?
No, the one above it.
So we have a motion and a second, I believe.
And we're, until Michael's satisfied, we're gonna discuss. And I, and I'm not saying that any other way, but I encourage it, that's my...
I just, you know, if he wants to come and propose in front of us again, you're, seem like your feet are dead set against it, I would be willing to listen to his proposal again. But, you know, let's put it to a vote, that's why we're here.
Yeah, rehearing is...
The rehearing.
Yeah.
Because we've erred in our decision.
Yes, and technically, a rehearing is supposed to present new evidence, and I don't see new evidence, I see a legal argument, but I don't...
No, I don't think they can put new evidence in there, they can present the same evidence as I remember. And a new hearing they could, but...
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying, yeah, because we're not voting to approve it, we're just...
Voting to rehear it or not, because we erred in...
Give us new evidence, is what you're saying.
Alright, I, I got, I'm decided.
Okay, so, we have a motion to deny the rehearing. We have a second. We had discussion, if everybody's good with the discussion, then let's vote. All those in favor of the denial?
Upholding the denial.
No. Denying the request for rehearing.
Alright.
I'll vote.
Okay. I have to choose my words ever so gingerly. So, all those in favor of denial of the rehearing request? And all those... Huh?
Was that a vote for you?
Yeah. So...
It was a slow one, Steve.
He's wearing down.
It's a maybe, three yeses, a maybe, and a no.
I've been up since 3:30 this morning, so I'm a little...
I'll, I'll vote, I'll be in favor of... I'll vote in favor up here, and it, just to make, so Gail doesn't have to be the only one 4-1 tonight.
Okay, so-
I'm not afraid to be alone.
That's denied 4-1. Okay. Other business before the board? I'm not sure, Gail, but you might be up for-
I am.
And I'm up. And Michael, you're up. Okay, so if the city managers, what do you call her, assistant?
Yep, admin assistant.
I think she sent out a notice in the mail.
Should be sending you something in the mail.
Ms. Brown, is it?
We, we, yes, we do please encourage that you fill it out, and that you would love to continue your association with this fine, upstanding board.
Are you really sure about that? I also want to say for the record, and I said it before, I do encourage Mr. Grant to go in front of the city council. My issue is not with the proposal, my issue is with the consistent actions of the city council. And that, I don't know that it'll change anything. If they don't, then we've got our answer. But there won't be any more ambiguity about what they do not want in that zone. So that's just my point to the general world. I do encourage them to go and talk to the city council.
Zion Hill, we're done with, right?
Yeah.
So the only thing we have moved is the very first one for short term.
I think we moved-
And 156, 176 Pleasant.
176 Pleasant.
Two there, right?
There's two there, and then the signed one.
Yep.
And that's all we have to move forward. We're gonna have information provided by the attorney.
Yep.
And I can make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Unless there's any further business before the board? Hearing none. We have a second? Yay. Gail?
Yay, yay, yay.
Thank you all.
We've done a very good job tonight.
Yeah, we actually, we got through that pretty expeditiously.
I thought we'd be here 2:30.